Good evening, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 11th, 2020 is called to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please note the role?
Commissioner Kish is present, Commissioner Maloney is present, Commissioner Clymer is present, Vice Chairman Barnes is present, Chairman Bray is present, Commissioner Ellison is absent, Commissioner Steiner is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to excuse both Commissioner Ellison and Commissioner Steiner from this evening's meeting, please.
I move that we excuse both of those absences this evening.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Kish to excuse Commissioner Ellison and Commissioner Steiner from this evening's meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number one is the approval of the draft minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on February 12th, 2020. Those are online, and can I, I will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move that we approve last month's minutes.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Vice Chairman Barnes, to approve the minutes from February 12th, 2020. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Public comments, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Any speakers' cards? Hope we're going fast enough for you, Mr. Park. This is an opportunity, now is disclosure ex parte communication, this opportunity for Commission members to disclose any ex parte communication that may have taken place prior to this meeting on any agenda items, any? Anything? All right. All right, we'll move right into new business here, and it will be the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on agenda item number two, the zoning ordinance text amendment commercial district standards, dimensions requirements, and Christian.
All right. Good evening, Commissioner Bray and Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm here before you this evening with a request from the city to conduct a zoning ordinance text amendment for our commercial districts standards. So this proposed amendment would impact the entire city of Goodyear. It would impact our neighborhood commercial zonings C1 and our general commercial zonings C2. Specifically, it would impact the minimum commercial lot width and the minimum lot sizes. The first question you might have is, what exactly is lot width? Lot width is measured from the front building setback. In the picture on the left, you will see an existing commercial lot from the pedestrian or car point of view. The lines show you the lot width. For more clarity, the picture on the right shows an existing commercial lot within the city. You can see it is L-shaped, but the lot is approximately 183 feet wide as measured from the building setback line. If the front of the lot is unclear based on the shape or touching multiple streets or driveways, staff has provided guidance that the front of the lot is the narrowest of the two lot lines, the one adjacent to the street, or the line that is obviously the front. Currently, the city of Goodyear, Article 3, Section 336 on commercial district standards provides recommend, uh, requirements in Section A on commercial districts dimension requirements. In order to create a commercial lot, the city requires a minimum lot width of 150 feet and a minimum site area in C1 and C2 zoning districts, and the lot must be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. We looked at some of our neighboring and fast-growing valley cities and found that six of them, four in the West Valley and two in the East Valley, did not have any minimum lot width or minimum lot size. We also have at least two proposals within the city or for the city today to create lots and commercial centers that have width smaller than 150 feet minimum. We cannot process these lot creations or lot splits within, without a zoning ordinance text amendment change. And our staff proposed solution would be to keep our minimum lot widths but allow it to be eliminated under certain circumstances. So let's discuss those certain circumstances and a practical application on the next slide. So in both of the pending cases, the applicants which are asking for smaller lots than 150 feet in width are in large unified shopping centers that have cross-access to the parcels, that ample parking, and they have shared parking agreements. So lots within a unified commercial center, which is a development intended for three or more businesses so long as the development has permanent cross-access, shared parking, and access agreements necessary to meet the minimum parking and maneuvering requirements and all other applicable recommendations. So this is a fictitious example, but I just wanted to explain to you what the ramifications of this decision are. So here's an example of a lot which meets the requirements. In the image on the left, you can see the lot has 445-foot width. There are two existing buildings on the pad, on the site, and there's some vacant pad sites there, but there's ample shared parking both on and off the parcel. So that's our first practical example. So let's say the owner of this lot wants to develop four additional buildings, awesome restaurant, neat shops, cool restaurants, and unique shops. You can see the proposed buildings and the direction that they face based on that arrow. So this proposal, having met our design guidelines, would be approved. The new buildings are a part of the larger unified center and still share the same shared parking and access both on and off the yellow parcel. So those would fly. Now, uh, just like we like to own our own properties for our homes, and we don't like to rent always, you'll see on the right, let's say that awesome restaurants, neat shops, cool restaurant, and unique shops all want to own their own land. They would still be a part of the overall center, they'd be a part of the HOA, which in a commercial center we call a POA, or Property Owners Association, and they still have the same access to that same shared parking both on and off the parcel. The image on the left and the right have the same square footage of buildings, the same amount of parking, but currently, the city would not allow three of the businesses to own their own land. Three of them now fall below the 150-foot minimum, even though they still maintain the same amount of shared parking and access. So if property owners say, um, awesome restaurant wanted to locate here, but it was, they wanted to own their own lot, they wouldn't be able to do so. However, if we amend Article 3, Section 336 Commercial District Standards subsection A for C1 and C2 to allow the minimum lots to not apply if it's in a unified center, has cross-access parking, cross, cross-access, shared parking, and access easements, um, these businesses would be able to own their own property. We can say, we can have something like the scenario on the right with each of the tenants having the opportunity on their piece of property within the same POA and have that dream come to fruition. So staff has evaluated the impact of this proposed amendment and researched other communities. With no major concerns being found, staff recommends approval of this amendment to allow for the ability to waive the minimum lot widths and square footage requirements for lots within unified commercial developments, which they're intended for three or more businesses, so long as the development has permanent cross-access, shared parking and access easements necessary to meet the minimum parking and maneuvering requirements and all other applicable requirements. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Yes?
Why have any conditions? Why not just strike it completely and say there are no minimum widths or lots? What's the downside?
Great question. So let's say a business were to come in as a standalone on a street. We wanted to preserve that ability to have 150 minimum width because they might, they're then not in a unified commercial center. So we didn't want a bunch of standalone lots coming in that didn't have that ability to have some overflow on shared parking.
So this only, I apologize. This only applies to when there is multiple buildings that have passive parking or that permits that, you were talking, shared park?
Correct. So a larger commercial center where you have ample parking areas throughout the center, they would be able to say, hey, we want to own our business on this lot, we have parking not only on our parcel, but we also have parking in the center that we can use, so if there is overflow, it's provided for within the center.
So if the small business, the awesome restaurant decides to sell, that is, that relationship maintains the same, like somebody can't come in and say?
Yes.
Well?
Just like in your own HOA, if you sell and you sell it to the new property owner, still in the same HOA, you still have the same CCNRs. So if that restaurant did change hands, one, we would still do a parking study to make sure it worked out, but you, that parking would be provided for within the center.
What was the original intent of the rule to have the minimum lot?
I, I can't speak exactly, exactly to the history, but likely to prevent lots from coming in on a major arterial road, narrow where there's minimal acts, like a lot of access and driveways, and then having too many cars on that lot and not enough places to park. That's likely the impetus.
If I can jump in just one second to dovetail on Christian's explanation, um, many cities in, years and years ago, you used these same standards to, as an additional tool or the primary tool in which to regulate access to properties off of major thoroughfares so that traffic movement was safe and you could have turn lanes and things of that nature. And that, although, again, I'd, like Christian, I can't speak exactly to the history of it, that is a very common tool that was used in years past to, to regulate access to major thoroughfares, if that makes sense.
So you didn't have 26 driveways?
Correct.
And after the other coming off?
Correct. You had spacing, you would have at least 150 feet between driveways at least, and oftentimes more. But now, we have a different methodology in which to address that same concern in lot width that really isn't, especially in the unified center, isn't an issue at all.
Christian or Chris, wouldn't it be, i- is it possible that you could write it where you say, we don't, we don't have the 150 standard, uh, but it can be waived by a vote of the commission and leave it at that? And then you don't have these additional kind of step downs and check marks and leaves it a little bit broader? Cause I mean, to only get what we're saying, I have no problem with that, I'm just trying to think of, okay, what happens when we run into that one exception? Is there a better way to write this that we have more flexibility?
Currently, what would happen, for example, uh, we have a preliminary plat into the city right now to subdivide a commercial center. Planning along with our help from legal would check to make sure that that center had cross-access parking. We also do pre-application meetings, so when somebody comes in for a pre-application meeting, we're gonna vet the project that they're proposing. At that point, we'd engage our friends in legal to make sure, hey, we need to do some research, please provide, we're happy to waive the minimum if you provide us with a cross-access parking, your, your proposed Property Owners Association CCNRs that dictate that you're gonna share parking. So we'd work that, through that with the team and let the applicant know during the pre-application meeting that it's a possibility to waive that.
So it's a current launch, it sounds like. It sounds like there's some checks.
In the, and if I can dovetail on that too, for, that's for, the scenario Christian was explaining would be in the unified commercial center. If you have a standalone parcel, then the standard is what the standard is, although I certainly appreciate, um, the question, Mr. Chairman, um, we do have to have minimum standards, there is a bright line, and we can't administratively, we can't, um, waive rules because there's a equal protection claim. That gets into a bunch of legal stuff. So we have to have a rule, a standard by which to apply, if that makes sense. So this is kind of the hybrid approach to create some flexibility, as Christian's done an excellent job in explaining this evening, for the unified commercial centers, standalone projects have a, have a particular standard.
So if something came up that didn't quite fall within, an applicant could still request a waiver and have that reviewed?
So, waivers, we cannot grant waivers, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, um, we can't grant waivers, the commission cannot grant waivers, nor can the council, that goes to the Board of Adjustment, and, uh, which is, has a very high threshold in order to prove that. Um, there's a lot of case law associated with that. So in a standalone situation, the standard is pretty much what the standard's gonna be, unless there's a hardship that is not self-imposed.
Any other questions for staff? Anybody else in line to speak?
I have one speaker card, but it's from Michael Merowitz in support of staff recommendation, but he does not wish to speak.
Perfect. Um, great. With that, I will close the hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item 202200001.
Second. It has been moved by Vice Chairman Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Clymer, to approve Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Um, gonna move into a couple of items three through five, more of a work session type thing, and so what I'll do is I'll just turn it over to staff, and we will sit here quietly and be entertained. And, uh, Vice Chairman Barnes, if it's all right with the rest of you, uh, I was gonna excuse him, he has to go to Vegas tonight, not for fun, so.
Yeah, I apologize to the commission, I have a project in Nevada that's got a standing Wednesday morning meeting, so if I can reduce my travel, my arrival time, um, then I'll do it.
You have to have a motion. You have to move to let me go? No, I don't think so, do we?
No, we're finished.
No, no, yeah, I think you can just excuse him, so as long as the commission recognizes it, so.
We recognize.
We recognize your excusal.
Go safely.
Yeah, drive safe up there.
Wash your hands.
Yeah.
Yeah, wash your hands.
First order of business. All right, it looks like, uh, Christian, you're back. Ooh, the 2020 census.
Yes, very exciting and timely topic. This is just an overview of what the 2020 census is, what's happening within the city of Goodyear as it relates to that, and some information about the Complete Count Committee. If you have any questions during this presentation, feel free to let me know. If you're getting bored during this presentation, I can start skipping a lot quicker, so. So the first exciting thing that happened as a, as it relates to the 2020 census initiatives was that our mayor, um, Georgia Lord, signed a proclamation establishing the Complete Count Committee. In general, the Complete Count Committee are volunteer, uh, on volunteers, they happen across the state, whether it be tribal, state, or local government leaders and citizens, and their goal is really to bring awareness to the 2020 census efforts. Um, in the city of Goodyear, we have about a dozen or so volunteers from neighborhoods across the city that volunteer as a part of this effort, and really, the goal is neighbors being educated about the census and providing that awareness to the rest of the community. So why do we do a census? This is a question that I've been asked actually this week even. Bottom line is it's mandated by the Constitution. Um, does anyone know what year the first census took place? I know, you didn't think you were getting quizzed, huh? It's a work session, right?
In the presentation.
1781.
That was really a good guess. So it's 1790. That was really good. Did you cheat? Did you look at my?
History teacher.
Okay. So, um, second trivia questions, anyone know what day is Census Day? That's okay, you and your residents, your neighbors probably don't either. Census Day is April 1st, and the census is a snapshot of where all individuals reside within the United States one specific day. And it's really necessary to distribute tax dollars and provide equal representation. So what does the census information actually tell us? It helps us draw congressional districts, even state legislative districts here within the, um, state of Arizona, we use the state for that. It helps enforce the Voting Rights Act. It distributes more than $675 billion annually to local and state communities, and it helps inform a lot of decisions based on transportation, health services, schooling, helps as, as an aid to planning for state, local governments, and even organizations or people looking to locate a business in a location. So I thought this area was a little fun, this is a little bit of Goodyear trivia and history, you're a history teacher? I love history and I also love geography, so, um, hopefully you'll like this slide. I know, I'm really nerdy. So let's talk a little bit about Goodyear growth through time, cause I've found this to be pretty impressive. So Goodyear was incorporated only in November of 1946, so we're a very young city, yes, 1946 is very young. Originally, when we were incorporated, we had 151 homes and 250 apartments. Um, we became a town, if you will, in 1987, and we have grown immensely. Today, we stand at 191 square miles, we are 36 miles north to south from just north of Camelback nearly to Interstate 8, and we are 17 miles east to west from 67th Avenue out to Perryville Road. So we're a pretty giant but awesome and beautiful city. Just to give you visuals of what that looked like, on the left, you'll see 1949. The only real developments here, I can't use a mouse to save my life today, but, um, Park Shadows is down over here in Goodyear, the rest of it was agriculture, no Interstate 10, that line is just there for reference, and then you had, um, on, in 1996, you'll see that North subdivision started to blossom here. So we have North subdivisions in 1996, and a little bit of Pebble Creek, Eagles Nest, and Palm Valley Phase 1 being developed. You move into the 2000s, the heyday, you see Canyon Trails 1 and 2 was getting built, Cotton Flower was getting built, the Autumn Mall's being constructed, Palm Valley's under construction, Rio Paseo's being graded, and in 2017, you can see we've expanded immensely. All of Pebble Creek's nearly done, Canyon Trails is nearly done, so we grew a lot in a really short amount of time. I won't leave our friends in Australia out, but their history's a little bit more boring. 1949, just desert and hills. In 1996, you see that the lakes have been dredged and there's hardly any development down there in 1996. 2003, you could see a golf club in Australia Mountain Ranch opened up, you could see the high school is starting to be developed down in the south, and in the last 10 years, there's been immense growth. Montecito and Cantomea being graded in 2006. Up in the top, you'll see Las Brisas starts up in 2010, Cotton Lane Bridge gets developed, and then in 2017, you'll see there's some substantial development down in Montecito and Cantomea. What does that look like from a graphical standpoint? This is my more favorite slide. We had some immense growth, so in 1930, before our first census, there were about 1,000 residents here. That was very steady till about 1960. No, no, we moved into the 2000s, yippee. But really, when you get down to 1990 and 2000, our community grew by 200% from 6,000 to 18,000 residents, and by the 2010 census, we had 65,000 residents here in Goodyear, as you saw from the maps earlier. In 2015, we took a pause and we took a special census because we knew that we had grown quite a bit, and we are now estimated to be, um, the 12th largest community in the state. Uh, we're ahead of, uh, we're ahead of Avondale now, actually, we're the 11th largest in the state, we're ahead of Avondale, and, um, just, you know, we're just ahead of Buckeye and Flagstaff, we were ahead of Avondale, we should've passed Avondale by now. So we're becoming quite a big city, and you'll see, I'm, I'm sure you guys are aware with all the work you've done, in one year, we grew by 5%. So our estimate is that we're closer to 88,000 residents, so substantial amount of growth that we want to definitely be counted, um, as we look forward to the next census. So let's talk about the upcoming census. We look to the past, let's look to the future. The new tagline for the census is "Shape Your Future, Start Here," and it will be incorporated across a lot of platforms that you'll see. What you'll notice about the themology of this is that "Shape Your Future, Start Here" kind of sounds like you're clicking on something. That's because there's a new, um, a new way to take the census coming, uh, this year, and I'll talk about that here in a few slides. What the city's done and what the region's done to really prepare our region though is that we've contributed funds to the regional fund. These efforts are being led by the city of Phoenix for the whole region. As a region, we've contributed about $2 million in funds. Goodyear's share's been about $27,000 over the two years, and you'll start seeing, I hope you have noticed, there's been a lot of, um, advertisements on TV, some billboards featuring different people talking about what the census means to them, um, the light rail's been wrapped, you'll see a lot of these regional efforts that are really preparing the valley to get ready to take that census, because granted, we want our count in Goodyear to be high, the whole valley count really is, uh, is imperative for our whole community to receive the funding we all desperately need. So what's happening next? This month, postcards will be sent inviting everyone to, uh, take the census, and starting tomorrow, you can actually take your census. Um, the official census day is April 1st, but you can begin, like I said, taking that If people haven't responded to the census by, um, May or July, they'll receive some follow-ups by people visiting their homes. Um, in July, we'll start counting group quarters, which, that would be our Perryville Prison, our most, uh, famous gated neighborhood in all of Goodyear, Perryville Prison. Um, and also, you know, our, our, our adults, um, housing facilities, that, those will start being counted in the group quarters era. The apportionment counts will be delivered to Congress at the end of this year, and then the redistricting process will begin in March, and this data will start being published next April. So a lot of exciting things are gonna be happening this month as it relates to taking the census, but that data will be available for us, uh, starting April, and we'll start getting our new, hopefully, new congressional seat. So, um, here's what you should know when you're taking the census. If you live in Goodyear as of April 1st, you will take the census in Goodyear. If your primary residence is Goodyear for six months and one day, you'll, you'll utilize Goodyear as your primary residence. If you don't have a usual residence, but, um, you, you take it wherever you are on April 1st, a way to think about your usual resident is where do you sleep, uh, where do you sleep and lay your head at at night most often? Canadians, it's a little bit different. If you're a Canadians, um, Canadian citizen, and you live in Goodyear, say, five months out of the year, you take it in Goodyear. So even if you're not here more than six months out of the year, you'd still take it in your primary residence within the United States of America if you're here on April 1st. It's a big misconception, so if you have any Canadian friends, please let them know. And again, you can start taking the census on March 12th. Uh, when I said "start here," what I was alluding to was the fact that you can take it on the internet now, so that is a new option that's never been available till today. So starting tomorrow, if you go to 2020census.gov, you can start here and you can start taking your census. If you don't like the internet or don't have access to the internet, or you're not as comfortable with the internet, our traditional means are still available. We have the phone, and in the phone, there's a multitude of languages that you can, uh, take the census in or get assistance with it. If you're a little more traditional, you can still do the paper form, you'll receive those probably around May, and a couple select households in, um, in the state will receive a paper form off the bat. Or, you know, if you haven't taken it on the internet, you will receive a knock on the door, and you can feel free to take that census in person. The good news is if you see a census worker walking in your neighborhood and you're just trying to watch Netflix and you know you haven't taken the census and you don't want to be interrupted, if you take it online right then and there, the census worker will be alerted, your address will be removed from their list, and then you can continue to watch Netflix. So what questions will be asked? We like to say the census is 10 questions in 10 minutes. Honestly, I think you can take it in less than 10 minutes, but essentially, they're asking age, that data is used for planning and federal funding, uh, for programs that are geared towards specific age groups such as children, working adults, women of childbearing age, or older populations. They have Hispanic origin and race, this is used really to enforce the Voting Rights Act. Uh, relationship to the person taking the census, so they're gonna ask you a household count, how many people live in your home? If you have a spouse or a child living in your home, they're gonna wanna know that you're, their relationship to, or a roommate, they're gonna wanna know their, your relationship to the person taking the census, um, the sex of the person taking it, uh, do you rent or own your home, that's for federal grant programs and things of that nature, and then the big, real big question again is how many people live in the household? So what's at stake when we're talking about the census? We've been growing so much in Arizona, especially as we know it here in Goodyear, there's something going up every day, but currently, Arizona, uh, you know, there's, um, 435 congressional seats within the United States of America, and those are portioned based on population. Based on our, you know, projected 7.3-plus million people now living in Arizona, it's likely that if we have a complete count in the state, we'll have a, a new congressional seat, which means that we have more representation in Washington DC, that's great for us as Arizona. $20.5 billion of federal program funding is at stake, so making sure that we get our fair share. I always say, you know, we pay income taxes, we pay a lot of taxes, that goes to Washington, but we want it back here in Arizona, and the census is a great way to ensure that occurs. And then, um, about $3,000 per person per year are brought back to the state of Arizona based on census participation. Uh, in Goodyear, that looks like 253 million... In Goodyear, that looks like two hundred and fifty-three million dollars worth of state funding for every Goodyear resident that is counted. I think I skipped a slide. No, it's okay. The goal of this census, really, and our committee's work, has been really to maximize the self-response. We don't want somebody to have to come to your door. We want our residents to respond, you know, when they get that invitation. A goal of the census in general has been to reduce the cost, to be more efficient with the tax seller, so this online portion will help with that. And then we've been really having our Complete Count Committee engage with businesses, community leaders, groups of faith. We really want our neighbors to tell our message for us versus the government telling the message for us. Like I said, each person counted in Arizona brings approximately nine thousand dollars to the region. For Goodyear, many city services, such as recreation programming, parks maintenance, police and fire, street repair maintenance, amongst other things, depend on population allocations from the state's shared revenue. So that's our sales tax income, vehicle licenses, and gas tax. So the more money Goodyear receives from its piece of state shared revenue pie, as determined by this ten-year count, the more programs and services we can provide to our residents. So based on the twenty-ten census, Goodyear residents counted for three hundred and forty-three dollars from the state to the city. And that equates to about twenty-three percent of our general fund revenue. So it's one-fourth of our city is based on census data, and that count, and the money the state provides to us directly. I'm almost done here. Engagement and outreach. A couple outreach. Some people are more digitally savvy. The region has a website called icount2020.info. On that website, you can sign up to get text alerts or be alerted when the census takes off. So that's a regional resource that tells you what the money means to the region. Here in Goodyear, we have a local site. If you go to the residence section of our website, the first, one of the first links is Census 2020. That gives you information about what our volunteers are doing right here in the City of Goodyear, how we're engaging with our residents, and what the census means to us. Also, some of our grant funding that's been provided, that we've been able to offer programming or enhancements within our community are located there. And as you know, there are some areas within all communities that are a little harder to count, particularly those with a lot of vacant units, families moving in and out, sometimes multifamily or rentals, areas that have a lower educational attainment rate, or higher poverty, or higher unemployment, or perhaps they don't speak English as their first or native language. So Arizona does have some statistically harder to count areas, and our Complete Count Committee has really taken that into account. The census has provided something called Rome, which is essentially a tool that helps identify places that have the potential to be undercounted. A couple of those include areas around Pebble Creek, our historic Goodyear area, and areas near Cervel Village, and also southern Estrella, Cantamia. Those are some areas that might have some more complexities in counting residents. So we've been targeting some outreach to those areas. The city has identified some shopping centers, and with our relationships with those owners, we're looking to stage some mobile engagement events out there. For example, last Friday, we went out to the Goodyear Village Center on a northwest corner of Litchfield and Van Buren. We had our census, our Tom, Topics on the Move van out there to provide some visual interest to the community. And we engaged more than two hundred residents who live just outside of historic Goodyear. We educated them about the census, you know. Some people thought that because the census starts in March and voting starts in March, they thought, oh, because I'm not a citizen, I can't take the census. We were trying to dispel some of those myths, you know. Voting is different than the census. Just because you're not a citizen, you are very welcome to and you should participate in the census. And that information is confidential for the next seventy-two years, so you have nothing to worry about there. We were able to dispel some of our Canadian myths. So you will see us out in the community this whole month, and then also at some other city events, to help people be educated about the census and to take the census. But I just wanted to provide you all with an update as you guys are community leaders and very engaged in your community. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the census. That starts tomorrow.
Any questions? Thank you for a very animated presentation.
That was fabulous.
I didn't want you falling asleep, so I had to, right?
Christian, only you can make census power.
Yeah, they should send you everywhere.
Had a slogan today, "Rain or shine, it's census time."
So someone who is Canadian here but lives here, they will get a postcard?
The residents will receive a postcard?
Then they have to know, well, I should fill us out, or maybe I don't know. So, you know, I play with a lot of Canadian golfers out there, and I'm sure most of them don't know.
Please tell them. Please tell them. Please tell them to spread the word. Tell all their Canadian friends. They're going to be here April first. They can start taking the census tomorrow. And even if they haven't received their postcard with their code, if either of you haven't, if any of you haven't, you can just type in your address to the website. It'll basically say, oh, is this your address? And you'll say, absolutely, and you can start taking the census. You don't even need to wait for the code. You can start tomorrow. And children count, that's another misconception. If it's a newborn child, the child counts. If the child's going to be born by April first, feel free to count him also. So, yeah, we want to count that as well.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Perfect. Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. Katie. Organizational changes. This should be fun.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Commission. We just wanted to share, we had some changes to the organizational structure that we wanted to share with you. We haven't added any new positions, but we have repurposed some of our positions. There was a change in building. One of our buildings' plans examiner positions that were open has been changed to a plan review supervisor. And then similar in co-compliance, one of the co-compliance officers' positions was changed to a supervisor. In planning and zoning, we haven't changed any of our positions to supervisors, but we have had two changes. One, we have done a title change to everyone. As you may notice, we have typically used Planner One, Planner Two, Planner Three. And it has been a trend for many communities to change to more, a different type of title. So we have changed our Planner One to Assistant Planner. Planner Two is now Planner, and Planner Three is now Senior Planner. And that's just to modernize the titles and be more consistent with other communities. However, we have changed Steve Cratchit and Karen Craver. They were Planner Threes, and they have been promoted to Principal Planners. They are not going to be Supervisors, however, they do have lead duties. They are going to be assigning out our cases, providing guidance to other staff members. You might also see them more at some of the future Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. We may take turns with myself and Christopher and Karen and Steve in staffing the Planning and Zoning. So you may see Steve and Karen in those leadership roles in the future. And as you can see, we do have one vacant position, Assistant Planner. We hope to have that posted soon. So if any of you know of somebody looking for an entry-level planning job, hopefully, it'll be posted on our city website soon. And that's what I had to share with you, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. All right. Thank you.
Oh, wow, this is challenging. Come on. There we go.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, thank you for the question last month, which I believe came from Commissioner Maloney, about what's going on with Civic Square. So we put it on the agenda. We have a brief presentation and a couple of videos to show you as well. On February, at the end of February, I can't remember the exact date now, we conducted a work session with council to unveil the preliminary exterior design elevations, which you'll see tonight, of the future City Hall, the forthcoming City Hall. So we're going to talk, walk through this. It's a real brief presentation. Feel free to stop me whenever, interrupt with questions or what have you, and I'll kind of walk everybody through it. Trying hard with the mouse. So this is looking from Harkins, if you will, to the west. The large building at the end of the, there's, this is City Hall right here. The buildings that flank the park on the north and south side are privately owned. Those are to be constructed by Globe Corporation. City Hall building is four stories. It is approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. Front's on a roughly, what we're calling a two-acre green space that is yet to be programmed. This is that green space is just illustrative of the area, not, that's not the actual design of the park. But this is the building elevation that has been settled upon. The entry to the library, there's one entry here and there's one entry on the other side. The west side of the building is parallel and adjacent to the Bullard Wash, so as this animation is going to go down, that's a still, if you're on the trail, the existing trail on the Bullard Wash, so that's the backside of the City Hall. You'll notice that there's a large cantilever roof, shed roof, that provides shade from the western sun. There's also many different elements, porches, if you will, or balconies, as an opportunity for break rooms and things of that nature for staff. You can see in the bottom there, that was the amphitheater. Rotating along around from, now this is looking towards the north. And we're going to come around to the front. And so the library is, the main entry to City Hall is right here, where it says City Hall. The main steps to enter the building is this facility right in here. This is the library. The library is a two-story volume that takes up the bottom, first floor, and the second floor. So the library is fully integrated into the City Hall building. This is a view from the northeast corner of one of the Globe office buildings. Again, coming around and looking directly forward, you'll see on the very bottom that it is a portal, kind of goes all the way through the building, so it provides a strong connection to the wash. We didn't want to cut access to the wash off. So that's just a flyover. Oops. That's One-Fiftieth. So that perspective right there is if you're like, a very, almost on top of the existing Harkins building, looking to the west.
Okay.
Yep. And this right over here, this is McDowell.
Okay. There's Bevmo, old Bevmo and.
Yeah, this is, was it Texas Roadhouse, right there. So this is, again, just another, another still, very similar to, well, it is actually the one that was in the presentation. There was a lot of effort put into the architectural design of the building. The charge that was presented to the design team was classically contemporary, and they're like, what the heck does that mean? Well, you know, we want a very forward-looking, contemporary building, but with a lot of classical elements. So it, you know, so it feels like a stately public facility. And so you can see that that's why there's a lot of columns, vertical columns here. That's a very unique feature of public buildings over the course of history. But it is a modern, forward-looking building because we are a modern, forward-looking community that still has a whole lot of growth in front of us. And so you'll notice here, I can get the mouse to move. This is a fourth-floor balcony. Fourth floor is the executive floor of City Manager's Office, as well as Mayor and Council. So there's a nice opportunity there to look over. It could be a fantastic venue for public events of the, you know, during holiday tree lighting, things of that nature, other citywide celebrations.
Is that a clock?
Yes, there is a, this is a proposed clock tower over here. And again, all the design of the actual park itself is not set yet. There has been a lot of discussion about integrating a clock tower because it's also a very traditional city feature. The connection between the City Hall and the park is also very important, making sure that that's very seamless and it kind of feels like one big space. Again, here's a little closer-up image of it. Lots of shade opportunities. You can see this curved awning that was on the front of the building is also perforated. You may not be able to actually tell. But the metal here is all perforated, so you have interesting shadow play that would go on. The main entry to City Hall is, you come up the stairs and it'll be to the left. This was the main public entry. Main, there's a main public entry to the library right here as well, on the right-hand side of that corridor. And then also that other entry to the library off of that parking lot that's on the north side of the building that I pointed out previously. Lots of different elements to create shade inside the building as well. You'll see these vertical fins. They are, the design team will be doing an interior shade and light study to make sure that it's not too glary, also not too dark, but provides an appropriate amount of interior light. So that's important, at least for our staff and our building, because we don't have a whole lot of windows in our building. And it's something that we're very cognizant of to really try and get light to penetrate inside the building as well.
What's going to happen to all these buildings?
So the city's, the plan, current plan is the city will maintain, own these buildings and still utilize them, just in a different capacity. So the court facility, which we're in right now, will remain the court and the Justice Center, if you will. The building where our office is on the backside over here. There'll be certain functions that still work out of those buildings, primarily field inspectors for engineering, building safety. Code compliance will continue to work out of these buildings. And then the city will also utilize, there's other city facilities that actually need some improvement, and those folks need additional space. So there'll be a space plan that goes under.
The police department will remain there.
Police and Fire will remain here. So in City Hall, and I probably will leave out a department, is, of course, Development Services, Engineering, Economic Development, City Clerk's Office, City Manager's Office, HR, Finance, Communications. IT will have a, I think they're going to stay where they are, I think, and they'll have a presence in this building, but the actual headquarters of IT will be somewhere. I think that's all the departments, so that's eight.
So a lot of the offices off of Litchfield and Van Buren, that corner, those will be moving over here.
Yep, most of those, all of the City Attorney's Office, sorry, Sarah, will be moving over here, too. So, yeah, essentially, all the functions, if you want to think about it like that, all of the functions from the current City Hall and the forward-facing functions of Development Services, Engineering, and Economic Development will all move there. When I say forward-facing, I mean public-facing, but, yeah. Again, this is just a still image from the wash side. There was a lot of effort and thought into the building massing. You'll notice, you may notice, that actually the building is, the bottom two floors of the building are wide, and the top two floors are narrow. And so, because we didn't need the, all of the square footage, decided to push it forward to save some cost and money. But also, the way to overcome that and overcome that wedding cake appearance was the shed roof, which also doubled to provide some shade for all the offices that face west in the summer. Not just in the summer.
Those colors are going to be the colors?
May, probably, something along those lines. We haven't got to design review of the building. It's still going through. There has to be a budget analysis of that. The design team does feel very confident in terms of the materials that are shown on here are well within the city's budget for the facility and for the building. But the colors and things of that nature, I'm sure there'll be some changes and evolution to that as we move forward. So what's going on with the project? Well, the groundbreaking is April of twenty-twenty-one. The city turns seventy-five years old on November nineteenth, and so we will be holding a seventy-fifth anniversary citywide event. It'll be on the Two Acre Park on November nineteenth. And the goal, or the, actually, the deadline, not the goal, but the contractual obligation is, is to move into City Hall in June of twenty-twenty-two, which seems like a long way from now, but it really isn't. So there's a, there's a lot of work that's currently going on with the design of the building and everything that's needed to support it, as well as the Globe office building. You remember, you may remember from the PAD approval, Globe also will be building a hundred and twenty thousand. hundred and twenty thousand square foot Class A office building at the same time that City Hall's getting constructed, and the parking garage will also be getting constructed as well at the same time. The park will be also constructed during that time as well, so, um, there's, there'll be a lot of activity taking place on this property in the short term.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you may have, or...
That building, like, the, the City Hall was center, but the building off to the, to the right, was that where the class, nope, that over there?
Yes.
That's where the shopping is?
So the...
I gotta ask about the shopping.
Yes. Let's go to this perspective. So, this is City Hall.
Yep.
This is Class A office, it also has retail, um, opportunities on the bottoms, should it be, um, supported by the market.
Okay.
Same, this is, this building on the left is a mirror image of the one on the right.
Yep.
And then these buildings in the front are contemplated to be, uh, retail-type buildings.
Okay.
And then you can see the parking garage tucked in behind over here, and then a sister parking garage tucked in over here as well. The first building that Globe will be constructing is this one on the right-hand side, this parking garage will be constructed, City Hall will be constructed, the park will be constructed, and all of the streets around this in order to provide, uh, the connection to One Fiftieth. And this road in front of City Hall, sorry, the mouse is a little slow, this road in front of City Hall will continue south to McDowell, so it'll be two points of ingress and egress to the property.
Does the completion of the second building rest on the success in, like, how fast this one fills?
So Globe is the owner and developer of all of the property, uh, and so, I, I can't speak for them since they're not here, uh, but the logical answer to that question would be yes.
Right.
Um, I know that they've had a fair amount of interest already expressed in their, in the first building.
Oh, okay. It just is such a, kinda like a Jack and Jill-type looking building, it looked funny if one was made and then the other one was.
Yeah, the, the desire is, is that they are sister buildings.
Right.
Very, very similar, um, so it helps create that, um, encapsulated feeling around the park as well.
Cool, awesome.
The, also, and likewise, as I mentioned, Commissioner Maloney, on the first floor of the building on the right, would be opportunities for retail, should the market support that, same thing on the left-hand side, on the s- on that building as well. So we, we purposely, when we did the zoning effort with them, created a lot of flexibility in terms of what could be on the first floor. Um, hopefully, the market, this is gonna be a very unique area, and be, be very attractive, so hopefully, we're very hopeful that we can get, get some good stuff. Any questions?
It's good, can't wait.
Yeah, two years, it's gonna go by fast, though.
It'll go by fast, yeah, things will start getting, um, dirt moving out there pretty soon, I mean, April, by, by sh- certainly by April, um, probably beforehand.
Wow.
Have they done any infrastructure over there? I can't remember.
Not yet. Uh, we are act- we just had a meeting today about infrastructure for the project, and so, uh, it is, there is a, a significant investment and effort moving forth from Globe and cooperation with the city, um, in order to move all of this along in a timely manner, so. We're gonna be moving in on June, June twenty-twenty-two, we have to have the roads and the fiber, the electric, the, you know, everything, so, it's gonna be good.
Cool, thank you.
We're looking forward to it, so thank you.
Would it be possible to share this PowerPoint, or is that not allowed?
Um, we can... This, there's, so, yes, if you wanna share the PowerPoint, there's one of that's up during the council meeting, we'll get you the information.
I just, I would just love to share this with my wife and...
Sure.
'Cause she is the manager over Liv Goodyear, right, in that area, and her owners were interested in knowing what was going on.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's, uh, there is publicly available information that you can view at home on your computer.
Perfect.
And we'll, we'll, we'll point you in that right direction.
Thanks.
Any other questions for me?
Nope.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Staff communication?
Um, I've got none right now.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held on April fifteenth, twenty-twenty, at six PM at the Goodyear Municipal Court and Council Chambers. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.